This is the City of Waupeka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, and I call this meeting to order and let's, oh, I'm sorry. We're going to do the public hearings first, then we'll do the pledge and all that stuff after that. So we have FYI for council members and then also staff and the audience. We have, normally, we just have our regular city council meeting, but before we start that city council meeting, we have three public hearings that we're going to go through tonight. And then after those three public hearings, then we'll go into our regular scheduled city council meeting. So let's start with the first public hearing. This is a public hearing relating to proposed industrial development revenue bond financing for Gusmer Enterprises Incorporated and their project. So in your packet, you have the notice of the public hearing. And I was hoping Kathy would be down here by now, but Aaron, can you just explain in a couple sentences what it means, or should I read it?
So Kathy's been working through most of all of this. I have not been involved in this too much, so I can't speak too much. So I would say, read it.
All right, let's read it. Thanks, Aaron. Why did we hire this kid? All right, here we go. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given in compliance with requirements of Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended that the City of Waupeka, Wisconsin, the city, will hold a public hearing on November 5th, 2019, at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, at City Hall at 111 South Main Street, Waupeka, Wisconsin, regarding the proposed issuance of City of Waupeka, Wisconsin Industrial Development Revenue Bond Series 2019-A and 2019-B. And this is for the Gusmer Enterprises Incorporated project. In an aggregate amount not to exceed $4.8 million pursuant to Section 66.1103 of the Wisconsin statutes, to finance a project to be owned by Gusmer Enterprises, a New Jersey And then it just goes on to explain the project. And finally, it says, "At the hearing, all persons will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express the views, both orally and in writing, on the proposed bonds and the location and nature of the project proposed for finance. Comments made at the public hearing are for the consideration of the common council, but do not bind any legal action to be taken." And this was actually published in the newspaper on October 24th, 2019. And let's just remember, of course, that we are just the conduit for this bonds. These are monies that Gusmer Enterprises are actually paying. You know, this is no obligation whatsoever to the city. So at this time, we would like, if anybody would like to give testimony in favor of going in this direction with these bonds, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less.
Chris Gusmer, on behalf of Gusmer Enterprises, address 703 Sunset Drive here in Waupeka. I've been here a few times, so I'm just here again to say, you know, thank you for supporting us through this industrial revenue bond financing. It'll help us expand our facility, create jobs, and create some more tax roll for the community.
All right, thanks, Gus. Chris? All right, next, anybody else that would like to give testimony in favor? Any other testimony? If not, do we have any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition of going forward with this? Hearing none, I declare this hearing closed at 6:06 PM. Council will be taking up this action at our next council meeting here. Next up, we have a notice of public hearing. This has to do with creating a municipal code 7.20 for all-terrain vehicle routes and operations within the City of Waupeka. And again, I'll just read you what the public notice was. Public notice, City of Waupeka, creating municipal code 7.20 on all-terrain vehicle routes and operation. Notice is hereby given that the common council of the City of Waupeka will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, lower level 111 South Main Street, Waupeka, Wisconsin, to hear testimony on the creation of municipal code 7.20 all-terrain vehicle routes and operations within the City of Waupeka. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available in the city's clerk office and also on the city's website. The hearings will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents, to be heard. This was sent by our city clerk, Sandy Stibbs, and it was published in our newspapers on October 24th and then again on October 31st. So again, just like the last public hearing, if you would like to make comments in favor of moving forward with this new municipal code for all-terrain vehicles, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Okay, anybody that'd like to give testimony in opposition to the proposed municipal code ordinance, 7.20? Any testimony in opposition? Hearing none, I declare this hearing closed at 6:08 PM. We will be voting on this tonight. This is actually the second reading of this ordinance, so at the council level, we will be actually acting on that item tonight. Okay, and the third and final public hearing. All right, this is a, I call this public hearing to order. Everyone, all the council members are in attendance. An ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code, and the purpose of this hearing is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the zoning code. Notice is hereby given that the common council of the City of Waupeka will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall, 111 South Main Street, Waupeka, to hear testimony on whether to change language in the Chapter 17 of the municipal code zoning ordinance to amend 17.310 parent four of the signs, district sign requirements. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents, to be heard. Copy of the proposed changes, where it could have been obtained in the city planning or the development office, and this was, I keep wanting to use my finger there, was published on October 17th and October 24th. Okay, so Aaron or Justin, either one of you want to just give a short on what this is?
Yep, I'll give a brief update. So this is just an administrative duty. When the county shop was, county highway department was built, a new zoning district was created, the PUL district. When that was created, this signed ordinance portion of the code was not updated to reflect that specific district. So basically, we're just adding PUL district signage specifications and district sign requirements that match other zoning districts in that, in their specifications. So it's just an administrative duty, really.
Okay. All right, so again, we would be taking testimony in favor of this ordinance. Anybody that'd like to give testimony in favor, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and again, limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor? Any testimony in opposition? I declare this hearing closed at 6:11 PM. All right, let's get right into the regular city council meeting, then. I do call this, are you ready? I do call this regular city council meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, and it is 6:12 PM. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sandy, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with the Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Ryan Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Demetri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right, next up is our consent agenda, and remember that these are items that we vote on. Even though there are a number of items in here, we vote on those with one motion, unless council members would like to see any of these items moved to the regular agenda where we would act on those individually. Anybody would like to see any of those items moved? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, regular agenda, no changes. We're just looking at the agenda as it was printed, and also in your packet, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, let's go into non-agenda items and announcements. Let's start with a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Officer Diana Flatoff for her 15 years of service to the city.
She's here.
I see that, yeah. I saw her up front. You're going to have to just talk louder, her mic's not working. Yeah.
Diana started with us in November of 2004, right?
2002, part-time.
And full-time, 2004. And I worked with Diana all these years, and she's one of the officers that I really count on and I really depend on, and I'm just really happy that she's here to get this tonight for her 15 years, so congratulations.
Well, thank you. I mean, thank you.
Right.
Thank you for taking me on as an officer. It's been a privilege working for the city. I really loved it, and my family's here, they know how much I appreciate working here, and I just hope that I'm able to come back and continue working.
Yeah, we are, too. Yeah, good luck. Thank you. Let's give her another round.
All right, you can sit down.
Oh, hey, Brian. What kind of investigative report? I gave her the wrong one, you didn't even read it? What the heck?
I was at the eye on it for once.
All right, yeah, that is my name.
Is that you? I'm sorry. Sandy, thank you for catching that. Okay. Sorry about that.
I told you to keep an eye on you today.
All right, it's going to take more than just one of us. All right, so we have another certificate of appreciation. It's for Kathy Caza, and we will thank her once she gets down here. But she started back in 2017, or 2014, I'm sorry. So this is her fifth year, and she's busy getting ready for our committee of the whole meeting later tonight, so she'll be down a little bit later. Okay? And we'll make sure she gets that. Okay, next up is public input. If there's any buddy that would like to speak to the council and staff on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and again, limit your discussion at the podium to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give us public input? No public input? All right, we'll move on, then. Kathy, we recognized you once already, but Kathy is here now, so I will give her that certificate of appreciation for her five years at the city. Thank you, Kathy. All right, let's move on to, we just finished public input, let's go to unfinished business. And we have the ordinance 0919. This is a create, ordinance creating a municipal code 7.20 all-terrain vehicle routes and operations. This is the second reading, so council, if you choose, you have the right and opportunity to approve that tonight. So I think it really comes down to if any council members would like to discuss this, if any council member would like to make a motion. Dave?
I'd like to at least ask the question of the group or whoever could answer. My concern simply is one thing, and that's the age. Under 16, and they said down to 12 at the last meeting, I believe, can drive ATVs. And we did hear that it was 12-year-old, but must have an accompanied driver next to him on another vehicle. Is that true for 15, 14, and 13 as well? Or, I don't, do you know?
I believe, yeah, I believe it is. They have to have an ATV certificate that they have to go online and, in order to operate.
It is. I actually just read this before coming down. I can say 100% sure, anyone under the age of 16 would have to be accompanied by that person on, you know, the other vehicle or whatever.
To add to the confusion, or, not the confusion, but to draw the distinction, UTVs, the driver must be 16. So there's two different things at work there.
Right. Thanks, Tom.
And the person that has to accompany this minor is an adult?
Specifically a parent, guardian, or a designated of the parent or guardian that is over the age of 18.
Okay, so they have to be designated. That's better than what I was assuming.
Paul?
I brought up at the last meeting, hours of operation, that I didn't feel it was a good idea to have hours of operation right after bars being closed at times when there's going to be higher alcohol usage. And I would like to, I guess, bring that issue up again to the council to, instead of having, I believe we left it at 24 hours, to limit some of the overnight hours so that we don't have people leaving establishments after drinking and then going out with their ATVs or UTVs.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one. On, in reading the ordinance, wait, I want to get to my page here. Let's see, "Operation within any municipal parks or pedestrian tails unless specifically designated is prohibited." Okay, so that is, the wording is funny, but that is to say that all our trails, like the River Ridge Trail and all our parks are off limits for any, okay.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And we're not thinking of signing any of our parks or our trails for ATV use? Not at this time, right?
We are not.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, is my understanding correct that an adult who lost his license or her license due to drinking and driving would be able to drive a UTV to the bar, presumably drink and drive the UTV?
Besides the age requirement, the only other requirement to drive a ATV or UTV is that you possess a safety certificate. There's not a requirement that you have a driver's license.
Can you drive an ATV drunk?
No. Well, no, you cannot. There, and in the state statute, which is incorporated by reference into this ordinance, there's quite a lengthy prohibition on that that mirrors, in essence, the state OWI and operating with a prohibited alcohol concentration with motor vehicles statutory scheme.
So could they lose their right to drive that motor vehicle, or would they just get fined?
It's a separate penalty scheme, even though it's very similar, and I don't believe that it has, it does not have a revocation of operating privileges for a motor vehicle.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
I've got another one.
Sure, go ahead.
We were told by someone who presented before us that other communities have tried this, and a lot of the concerns that people in the community had voiced had manifested. And, you know, that's coming from someone who wants us to pass it because they're an enthusiast. I'm just wondering if there's any sort of non-bias source that can substantiate that.
Yeah, Demetri, I think I'll turn it over to the chief, because he actually did give you an unbiased opinion at the last meeting, but we might not have caught it, so.
Yeah, I was at the North Central Chiefs Association meeting a few months ago, and we talked about the concerns that we had in this room, and at that time, all the departments or all the municipalities that looked at the same concerns, they didn't run into any of the problems. The only community that did have a, that had one issue was, I believe, it was the City of Rhinelander, Aaron?
Yes.
And it was a person that was operating, I believe, a UTV, not an ATV, and they were under the influence of intoxicants, and they did not possess a valid driver's license. That was the only concern that came up in our meeting, and I believe there were six agencies that were there that were represented.
Six?
I believe it was six.
Were they of, were they of similar, were they from communities representing similar traffic volumes and, to ours, or were they like townships?
No, they were cities. One was obviously Rhinelander. We had Managua, Nacusa, Eagle River. I'm trying to, do you remember the other?
I thought Brilliant was one of them. I can't remember off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, those are the ones I can just.
It was in that original memo.
Yeah, the original memo that we put out.
Mayor, do you mind if I, just off of Alderman Hagan's comment with hours of operation, I just want to give Chief Ozell an opportunity to speak to that a little bit, because actually, chief was gone for that past meeting. And I know I was asked a question, I was not able to answer it very well. So, chief, if maybe you don't have thoughts on it, maybe you do, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that.
Well, we had gotten together and met as department heads, and I had met with Aaron, and one of the things that we did talk about was the hours of operation in regards to going from sunset to sundown with a half hour on each way, and that was just to try to keep those UTVs and ATVs off the roads, and then try to minimize the issues that there may be with somebody didn't have a valid driver's license, that if they were to come into the community and went to different places and were drinking and driving, and at nighttime with being low visibility, those were some of the items that we talked about, and that was one of my concerns as to what that was, what the safety would be with that, because like with the ATVs, those tires obviously aren't made for the streets, those are made for off-road. And with the UTVs, you know, they're making, they're changing the tires on those, but that was just one of the concerns that I had was with the hours of operation, and originally, that's why that was in there for a half hour before sunset and a half hour after sundown.
You also had those thoughts, though, before you actually met with your Chiefs Association?
Absolutely.
Before you found out that, except for that one example, that was the only issue that.
Yeah, that was the only issue, and I think Stratford was the other, was the other department. And there's other municipalities that did have hours of operation that they did have. And I believe it was Stratford was the one that had a half hour at sunset and a half hour at sunrise, and that's what we thought was best at the time when, when I met with Aaron and a few of the other department heads.
So, and let's, let's also understand, too, though, that, you know, not that we can't do things different, but the three townships that, three of the four townships that surround us have approved ATV, UTVs, and they do not have a time restriction on theirs. So that would make it a different, it would make it different for the city than it would for the townships. It could be, so it could be confusing to an ATV or UTV user.
And if we go with the 24-hour use, if we run into issues, we can always amend it down the road, right?
You can.
So my vote will be, keep it at 24 hours and see how it goes.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I'm reading through this, and I just read through it quickly. I don't see any restrictions at all on hours of operation, so that means, automatically means 24 hours, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We did pull that based off of the conversation last night.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance number 09-19.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Olson, that we approve ordinance number 0919. This is creating a municipal code 7.20 all-terrain vehicle routes and operations. Any further discussion?
Me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, did you express concern about the hours of operation in regards to drinking of alcohol? Was that, was that a concern that you expressed?
Well, yeah, that is one of the concerns, but that's just not the only concern.
Okay.
And I, obviously, I understand that the other municipalities that, that have that, I'm just looking at it from a safety standpoint, that it is dark and that could be a contributing factor, but.
And the other municipalities do not have the concentration of bars and restaurants that we have, which makes, makes the situation here somewhat unique in the fact that people can go to, to bar, well, maybe not as many, and.
We are in Wisconsin, Paul.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's very true.
In Eagle River?
Yeah. So, but that's, that still remains a concern for me is to, is to have folks drinking and going out on their ATVs and UTVs and riding on our streets at 2:30 in the morning.
I guess, the only other thing, too, I guess I would bring up is, you know, during the wintertime, we do have people that use ATVs and UTVs for snow plowing, and on the other side of it, that would allow them to be able to go down the roads and be able to do that legally.
Well, they still can. Even if we don't pass. Well, they still can. Even if we don't pass this ordinance, they can still legally use their ATV and UTV on the roads from November 1st through April 30th. Alls they have to do is get that little blinking light that you put on, on the roof. So, the, the plowing part really has nothing to do. They'll still be able to do that, and you'll still see, as they get more popular, you'll see, you'll see at least UTVs probably on our roads. I just talked to one individual that just bought one, and he does a lot of plowing in our community, so you'll see it, you know. So, that's, that's, that's a different point in the state statutes is for plowing and stuff like that.
Just for a little bit of an update from a county standpoint, talked a little bit to the administrators in Clintonville, Wauiga, New London. Clintonville is reading, having their second reading next week. They have specific routes that they're looking at passing. Wauiga has passed an ordinance. They do have it limited to 15 miles an hour on all city streets for now, but that sounds like they're looking at changing that to more of a state statute regulation. And then New London is still working through the process, so just a, just an FYI.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I think good discussion, quite honestly. Ready to vote? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Nay.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Nay.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Steve Hackett? Who did I miss? Oh, Scott Puchatsky. I'm sorry.
Aye.
All right, seven ayes, two noes, motion carried.
All right, so the ordinance has been passed. This will take effect, help me out, Tom, Tony Hart.
It's not going to be published.
Yeah, so.
It's not going to be published.
So, by next Tuesday or Wednesday?
Well, next week, Thursday, it would be published.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your work, everybody. Next up, we have another ordinance. This is ordinance number 1019. This is an ordinance under City of Opaaca Chapter 9, Public Peace and Good Order, and Section 9.231, 231, smoking prohibited. And again, this is the second reading. Andrew, you have anything to add to what we discussed at the last meeting, or do you want to recap at all?
Well, there wasn't much discussion or questions last time. I definitely can answer any questions, or if you've heard things from your constituents that need to be addressed. What we're looking at doing is, with this ordinance, is just banning both smoking and electronic smoking devices in all of our parks. It was based on the recommendation of Park Board to move forward with those two things, and the other ordinance that we're getting to is just updating our parks list, and anything on that list would be considered under this smoking prohibited law. Any, or ordinance, any penalty has already been established, and we talked about that last time with Captain Helgeson as far as what that would entail. So, I can answer any questions that may have come up.
If a person is in their car smoking or electronic cigarette, is that prohibited in their vehicle in the park?
I would say yes, because they're on park property, right?
That would be with Andrew. Mr. Hart? Yes.
Yes.
Just wondering.
Because they're on the property.
Okay. Any other questions? So, he talked about both ordinances, but we're just talking, we're going to vote on the, the, if somebody makes a motion, we're going to vote on the, on the smoking prohibited ordinance, which is 1019. Anybody want to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1019.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Fair, that the council approves ordinance 1019, an ordinance under City of Opaaca's Chapter 9, Public Peace and Good Order, Section 9.231, which is smoking prohibited in area parks and city properties. Okay, any other, any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and as, and, thank you. As Andrew stated, this is, the next ordinance, 1111-19, is just updating our parks. And this needed to be done to make sure that we understand which part, which areas you're not allowed to smoke in.
Mayor, is, is that going to be published, that list, in the new parks? Is there going to be something published, or should we just read it so people would know that?
So, go ahead, Andrew. You go.
We are going to do some promotional, hopefully with the local paper, and educational as well. We'll work through with Park Board as far as signage in all these places as well. We'll just have to decide on what signage and where we're going to be placing that.
Good. Anybody else? Now, just going back to that smoking ban real quick, even though the front lawn of City Hall and the back area of City Hall and the sidewalks are not part of the parks, they are part of the ban, though. Correct?
Yeah, that's the one you just voted on. That's Section 3. It adds the City Hall, known as City Square, which includes green space, parking lots, east side of City Hall and sidewalks.
Okay, so it's not just the parks, it's plus City Hall. Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number 11-19.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that council approves ordinance number 11-19, an ordinance under City of Opaaca Chapter 18A, Parks and Recreation Area, Section 18A.01, Names of Parks and Recreation Areas. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Those are the public hearings, plus the, some of this was public hearings, and, and these were the ordinances from our last meeting. Okay, next up, we have a, we have the, under new business, we have consideration of final resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for Gusmer Enterprises Incorporated project. You left us to fend for ourselves before, Kathy, so now you have to work harder.
This is the easy one. This is the final resolution for the industrial revenue bonds for Gusmer for funding their expansion. Again, there is no impact to the city's borrowing capacity, and the city has no obligation to pay this debt, so it's all just running through the fact that Gusmer takes advantage of having our tax exemption on the bonds.
All right. Understood. Anybody want to make a motion?
So, move?
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Fair, that council approves the final resolution regarding industrial development revenue bond financing for the Gusmer Enterprises Incorporated project. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Abstained.
Paul Hagan? Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one abstained, motion carried.
All right. So, I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder here. We'll just go to the, the next section because the staff worked very hard on this, but this has to do with Class B intoxicating liquor license, and it's under license report number 1470. So, Aaron, I'll let you explain the process here.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Smith. So, as we know, a couple, well, about a month ago, we went through the process in which we had three applicants for the one liquor license that ended up not, or ended up being conditionally surrendered, went back to that building, Club 22. In the process, we found out that the Daines Home was one of those applicants that could really benefit from having a liquor license in their plan, and in looking at state statutes, working with staff, and really, it was Sandy and Barb in our office, help from Tom, that looked at possible ways that we could make it work within state statutes, found out that the 300-person capacity was one way to get an over quota license, and that had, there was a standard set in which, well, what is now known as Par 4, had been issued one years back for that same reason. We wanted to make sure that we knew that it was, in fact, 300 people that could fit in that Daines Home. So, Jane, our building inspector, went in, took her measurements, did her look-through of everything, and then our fire chief, Jerry Doeman, did the same thing, and they came back and they determined the capacity to be 420 people, so well over the 300. So, we were very happy about that and contacted the Daines Home and said, hey, get your application in. We think we have a, a solution for you. So, that kind of sums it up, and this is them applying for that, and you guys have an opportunity to grant that license.
So, you can see their application on page 75 in your packet. So, this would be no different than the other licenses that are, that are issued in the city. This will be after this, they would renew this on July 1st of, of next year, and it runs basically on a fiscal year after that. So, any questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd move to approve a liquor license, granting a liquor license to the Daines Hall?
No, second.
Okay. And you are actually approving license report number 1470? You okay with that? Okay. All right. Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that the council approves license report number 1470. This is a Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage, and this is under the above quota licenses that are allowed by the State of Wisconsin. It's being issued to the Daines Hall of Opaaca LLC, and William J. Clark is their agent. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And I do want to, as Aaron's already said this too, but the city clerk's office worked very hard to work through the process to find out if this was possible, and, and obviously, it came to a good outcome for the city and, and the Daines Home, too, for that matter. So, thank you, Sandy, and thank Barb for us, too. Okay, let's move on, then. We have a zoning code update contract with Community Planning and Consulting LLC, and Aaron, you're going to explain why we need to do this?
Yeah, so this is something I've talked about, I think, a couple meetings now, and obviously, just to briefly set it up, the background, on July 10th, Mr. Jeffrey Sanders came in and, and explained his audit of our Chapter 17 zoning code and, and some areas that he thought could be looked at and revised. Our code hasn't been gone through entirely in about 40-plus years, so it's time, I think, that we do that. In all my conversations with you guys as council members in my initial meetings and with department heads with community businesses and residents, this is something that has came up quite a bit, and it's something that it seems to be, a lot of people are supportive of moving forward with this type of rewrite. Now, the important thing is, there will be public input throughout the entire process. Mr. Sanders is, he values that in all of these that he does. He has given us a proposal to complete the work for an amount not to exceed $6,270, which is what we're asking for to, for council to approve that contract. I think it's important to keep in mind that he will be working alongside Andrew Dane, our current staff member in our community planning and zoning office, as he will be updating the comp plan at the same time. We are not in need of approving a contract with Andrew, as he is our employee. So, the comp plan and the zoning code rewrite do need to go together, and that's what will be happening over the next, I think I've said 10 months, actually, is, this is outlined as happening in about six months, so I guess we can probably expect for the process to be concluded sometime in the summer of 2020.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions now that I think about this. So, Mr. Sanders is the, is the individual that made the presentation to the City Planning Commission? That's the same individual?
That is correct.
And since we're entering into an agreement with an LLC, is Mr. Sanders that LLC, or does he have multiple employees or staff? Do we, I mean, we're working with him.
We are working with him. There are multiple people in that LLC, but we are working with Mr. Sanders.
Okay, so he'll be our, our person?
Yes, he will.
Of contact?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think, I don't know if we talked about this at the council level, but Alan and, and Eric and myself and Justin that sat through that presentation thought there was a, a lot of value to Mr. Sanders' presentation, and that's why we're here now. We think we can get it done in a timely manner, but we can also get it done in a way that we want it to be done in, in understanding to everybody, you know, so it's not in a foreign language once we get done with it.
He does a very good job of explaining it in a way to understand.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so this is a contract, so we need council approval. So, anybody like to make a motion?
Vote to approve?
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Keeland, that we enter into agreement with Community Planning and Consulting LLC for zoning code update, and this is for an amount not to exceed $6,270. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call. Sandy?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Next up, we have Resolution 1439. This has to do with our internet, so obviously, we're going to turn it over to Josh.
Okay, I'll give a little background on this resolution. That's in your packet. Dave Teal from the Opaaca County Economic Development Corporation has some access to community development block grant funding to use for a project, and one of the things he'd like to see it used for is improvement of internet and cellular communication in the county, as there are still many areas where it's pretty poor. And Dave approached Ralph Henry and myself to see if Opaaca Online would be interested in taking part in a potential project with this. Basically, what he's looking to do would be to have the Opaaca County Economic Development Corporation kind of take the lead on this, where they would build a number of towers in the county. So, we went on them. Who actually would own them, a little up in the area, it might be the Economic Development Corp., it might be the county that ends up owning them, but it wouldn't, wouldn't be us, but they would put them up for the purpose to improve internet and cellular communications. And as you get around to some of the rural areas in the county, there are places where cell phone service is nearly nonexistent. There are still areas where internet coverage is pretty poor, so there's still a need out there. For Opaaca Online, for our side of things, there's little financial risk for us getting involved in this project. Our financial risk would be purchasing equipment to put on these towers, hooking up new customers, just like we've been doing with the current expansion project we've worked on. And that's, to take on something like this is well available within our current budget and our reserves without any issue at all. And it kind of goes naturally with the project we just completed or the grant we just completed. Kind of keep moving into some other areas that would work well. One of the stipulations on using the funding is a certain percentage of it has to benefit low to moderate income residents, 51% of it. So that would be something we'd factor into this. We've talked to Dave, a number of ideas and concerns about that. And he's reached out to the state and clarified and got information. We feel comfortable with what we've learned about that. And that might be something, maybe we have different tier of service that we offer to tie into all of that. That's all things we develop down the road on that. Some side results, and this doesn't do much for us, but some side results from this, you know, that we'd work with Dave on some ideal locations where these towers would make sense, that are both areas that have deficits of internet service and where cellular coverage is poor. And then Dave would work, reaching out to the cell companies to see, okay, you know, we've got an internet provider that wants to go here. There are cell companies that are interested in going here. And for Dave to make this work on his side, he needs to get one or two cell providers as well on each of these towers. And that's going to bring in a revenue stream. That revenue stream might be work to help, might be used to help fund the Opaaca County Economic Development Corporation, might go to some other communities for projects or some other uses. And that's all stuff he's working on. So at this time, Dave suggested bringing a resolution to City Council to see if City Council's supportive of working with him on this project. And he'd need to find that out, to keep moving forward on this, to get approvals from other government entities as far as using the funding for broadband and cellular expansion. And ultimately, to get approved by the county board and to apply for the funding. If that all happens and all moves forward, you know, I'd be back here to get approvals for any lease agreements we'd need to enter, any pricing changes we'd make to work on this project. So it's not just going to magically come up. There'll be other approvals down the road if this all comes to fruition. And I don't know if you want me to read the whole resolution or not?
You should.
Okay. I don't have the number on the copy I've got here, but "To support improved high-speed internet access in Opaaca County, whereas improved high-speed broadband internet access is essential infrastructure to Opaaca County and its citizens in order to remain competitive in the 21st century for economic and community development, business development, tourism development, job creation, communication, public safety, education, healthcare, entertainment, attracting new residents, other current and future uses. And whereas, according to Wisconsin Broadband Now, over 18,000 Opaaca County residents do not have access to Federal Communications Commission Minimum Standard for Download and Upload Speeds Set in January of 2015 for Broadband Wired Internet Service. And approximately 4,000 county residents do not have access to any broadband wired internet service. And whereas, Opaaca County is eligible to apply for Federal Community Development Block Grant Program Funds for the purpose of construction broadband infrastructure in underserved areas that benefit low to moderate income residents. And whereas, cooperation among city, among county, city, village, and town governments will be necessary for partnering with broadband internet service providers to ensure that all of Opaaca County citizens are able to access broadband internet at speeds meeting or exceeding the standard set by the FCC. And whereas, the city of Opaaca is the operator, owner of a wireless internet provider, Opaaca Online. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Opaaca supports participating in a cooperative effort that provides wireless broadband internet access via Opaaca Online, which serves LMI residents, according to the rules set forth in an approved Opaaca County CDBG application for funds to improve broadband access located in underserved areas of Opaaca County."
All right, thank you. So, I mean, as Josh has said, this is something that is only going to add to the ability to give high-speed internet to people that are not able to get it. But it also should add to the bottom line and make our Opaaca Online even more profitable than it is right now. So seems like a win-win situation. And I thank Josh for looking for this, and Dave Teal, obviously.
Well, I wasn't looking for it. Dave brought it to us. Don't give me too much credit.
Okay, you get none.
I get a little.
Move to approve.
All right, motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Keeland, that we approve Resolution Number 1439. This is support improved high-speed internet access in Opaaca County. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett. Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Josh. Next up, we have an easement and a maintenance agreement between the city of Opaaca and Terrence D. Coleman Revocable Trust. Justin?
Thanks Mayor. This can be shown, or shown starting on page 99. Excuse me, on the wrong, wrong, wrong page here.
Correct.
111.
111, yep, sorry about that. Come on. 111, excuse me. So this last summer, I was contacted by a local resident near the Swan Park area after a few heavy rains. He had some washouts in his yard. Went out there, looked at the issue. And what we observed was, coming off the cul-de-sac Sunset Court there, there is a concrete flume, which basically is a drainage structure that channels water off the roadway. There was a shaped ditch, and basically, a lot of scowling, a lot of erosion. The resident said, well, the city needs to fix this. This is your drainage. I'm sure there's an easement here. So before we agreed to anything, I can't just go across on the private property. I needed to know if we had an easement, where we could work, how we could fix it. We did our research. We found there was no drainage easement there at all. Reviewing the plans, it seemed pretty apparent that there should have been an easement. It just was never created. There's other spots in that area, in those subdivisions there that have this very same feature that had an easement created back when the subdivision was built. Here, there was none. Also kind of thought, well, maybe there's a more cost-effective way of doing it. Could we reroute the water? Could we install more storm sewer? It, those other options were just too pricey, or too pricey, excuse me. So it seems like the best option here is to work with this private property owner and create an easement so that we can then go in there and, well, make some proper drainage. So what I have, following my memo, is some aerials showing you where the location of this easement is proposed. Following that, on page 113 is an actual easement agreement, which was drafted by Attorney Sorenson. So what this, what you are, would be voting on is approving, going into this easement agreement and thus creating the easement, which is then allow the city to go in there and properly correct the drainage issues that are along this residence land. Page 117 is an exhibit tied to the agreement, which is basically a legal description of the eas, or of the property. Following that is a legal description of the actual easement. And then finally, an exhibit showing basically a map or an overhead of where this easement would go. If you look at that, you can see that drainage flume, where there used to be kind of a swale. And now, we're, we're going to have this easement to, to make this correction and build a proper drainage system. So again, looking for approval from council to get this easement created and to go into agreement to maintain this drainage area within this subdivision.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Fair, that the council, sorry, I missed my spot here, approves of entering into an easement and maintenance agreement between the city of Opaaca and Terrence D. Coleman Revocable Trust. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan. Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett. Nine eyes, motion carried.
All right, let's talk salt sheds.
Thanks Mayor. This memo is on 104 of your packet. So back in August 6th of 2019, council approved, we went into contract with Wheeler, a company that designed our future salt shed. And then also will provide the materials for that salt shed. The materials including mostly timbers and then the outside metal shell of the building. That approval was just over $100,000. We budgeted $300,000 for this salt shed, which we're working on now. This one is, this approval is the construction of that salt shed. So getting the materials from Wheeler, along with some additional items, and constructing the actual building itself. I put together an updated budget. So with the design, plus the anticipated approval tonight, along with a few other incidental items, you can see that our budget is shaping up to be 257, which is well under what we actually budgeted at 300,000. We put this out to sealed bid in October that was advertised. We received eight total bids, which is a tremendous amount, ranged from 125,000 to 226,000. The lowest bidder was T2 Contracting of Toma, Wisconsin. They coincidentally just completed two of the salt sheds for Opaaca County at their new facility, one of which is nearly identical to the salt shed that we're looking to build. So they're well-versed in a very similar building. The bid tab is shown, two pages down on 106, it shows you all the, the eight bids. We had some alternate bids on there. And the idea was, some of these other items that weren't initially included with the material list, such as the overhead door, which is like a garage door, access door, and then the roof, we thought, let's put those in alternate bid. There was some potential of getting local contractors to complete that at a much better cost. But what we found out with T2's bid is that that's about as good of a cost as we're going to get. So we're just going to, I'm asking to get the base bid, plus the alternate bid, approved altogether in one motion. Following that is T2's actual handwritten bid, their signature page. Then also a graphic showing where the salt shed's going to go on the Habercorn site next to our future building. And then finally, a picture of a salt shed, which is at Opaaca County Highway's, Highway Department's new facility. That's a, almost identical to what we're looking to get built out at Habercorn. So I'll open it up to questions, but I'm looking for approval to go into contract with T2 Contracting of Toma for an amount not to exceed 125,185 dollars.
Sorry, I'm just kind of chuckling. I'm thinking, does this meet our design standards within the city of Opaaca? So, go ahead Scott.
Justin, can you explain what this access door and trim frame? It seems if it's just a walk-through door, it's a little pricey. So is there something I'm missing here?
It is basically just like a storm door. But it's an exterior, it's a heavy duty. It'll hold up to corrosive environments, the salt. So it's, it's a much heavier door than your standard door. So.
Nice job getting eight bids, and that's great.
A move to approve.
Okay, motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve of the construction contract with T2 Contracting LLC of Toma, Wisconsin, for construction of new salt shed for an amount not to exceed, is this, 125,185 dollars. Any discussion, more discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Ten eyes, motion carried.
All right, looks like you're still up, Justin. We Energies easement.
Thanks Mayor. Can I add one more thing to the salt shed discussion, or is that passed?
We're all done.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted, I should have mentioned the schedule. Contractor indicated that they would like to get started this spring. There is a couple items, the concrete item he's behind on. We gave him a list of other contractors that could possibly do it. So there's a possibility that this gets started as soon as, you know, January or February. But we're looking to get started on it this spring and have it completely done by June. So the next item, the airport easement, page 99 is my memo. The airport was contacted by We Energies to install a gas line at the airport, which would service the hangars to the west of the turntables. This was basically spurred by the most recent hangar that was built out there. That hangar, the owner requested a gas service line so he could heat the hangar. So We Energies is looking to install a gas main within the airport property. Page 100, again, some aerials kind of showing the approximate location within the airport, followed by an easement agreement. Again, this is with We Energies. Looking through the wording, it's pretty much standard, where it gives them basically access to the land within the easement to construct and then maintain the gas main at pretty much any point. They have to restore the grass as, as it was before. We cannot put up any new buildings up on top of this easement. I don't see that as an issue. The alignment of the proposed easement and gas line basically comes in, in a grass swale. And then we'll follow what we already have out there paved. It allows for future expansion as we add additional hangars. They can continue to the west and add on additional gas services to future hangars if needed. Page sheet 103 is a temporary exhibit that is tied to the easement agreement. We've done this before with WPS easements, where they give you a temporary one. Once they construct the line, if nothing changes, they will finalize it and then record it as a, as, as the actual exhibit. If there's changes, they'll note those changes. And then I'll have to bring it back to council again for approval. The city is not on the hook for any expenses or costs for the creation of this easement, the construction of the gas line, or any maintenance that is associated with it. So basically, what we're getting is just additional utility services out in the airport for potentially more hangars. So looking for approval of this easement agreement between us and We Energies or Wisconsin Gas LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we approve of an easement and maintenance agreement between the city of Opaaca and Wisconsin Gas LLC. Is that the same as We Energies?
They're their own, by We Energies.
Okay, all right.
There is no maintenance agreement here. It's just an easement, correct?
Within, within the wording of this agreement, it talks about having the ability for ingress and egress to access and for, and let me, I gotta look it up again.
And I guess I could just maybe ask the question again. It allows for access for maintaining, but there's no agreement that you're requesting for maintenance between the city and We Energies? Are you, can you clarify that?
Well, I, I.
Well, I, I, I just wanna make a point here that, that there isn't a maintenance agreement, it's just an easement that you're asking to have approved. And, and you had, I think, said that when you said that the city was not gonna be on the hook for any maintenance, I just wanted to make sure that there was.
Well, the heading says distribution easement gas. Within the wording, number one purpose is, the purpose of this easement is to construct, install, operate, maintain, repair, replace, and extend underground utility facilities, pipeline, pipelines with valves, tieovers, main laterals, service laterals, together with all necessary pertinent equipment under and above ground, including, you know, keeps going on. So I took that as the easement would be created to allow them to construct and maintain their facilities.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Scott.
So we're okay?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have, this is a first reading of an ordinance, this has to do with an ordinance amending various provisions of the municipal code relating to license and permit fees and establishing fees for other municipal services and repealing license and fees that are no longer required or issued. And Sandy's the one that's the key on this one here.
Okay, so I've spent quite a bit of time reviewing the city ordinances and the fees and came up with what you have in your packet. I gave a lot of detail in each of my requests, so I'll kind of hit the highlights, and if you have any questions, let me know. Started with commercial tree trimmers. The ordinance was adopted in 2002, and the fee was set at $30 a year. We've not increased it for 17 years, so in this case, I'm requesting to increase it to $50 a year, and we currently issue six commercial tree operators. The fruit, vegetable, and farm garden peddler, we only issue one per year. At one point, we did issue four to six, but now we issue one. We've only been charging $75, and that has been in place since 1986. So for 33 years, it's been a set fee, and I would like to increase that to $120 a year, which puts it at $10 a month. In comparison, if you're wondering, the Saturday farm market charges $5 per each vendor every Saturday. If they're on Main Street every Saturday and there's 16 days, they're paying $80 to come for 16 times. Now, the current fruit and farm market person can be there 365 days a year, sunup till sundown. There's no restrictions on it. So I feel that it justifies having an increase in his fee. The background check, this one I'm gonna defer to Chief Hozell. We've talked extensively about it, and he has his thoughts on the backgrounds.
So in order for us to do background checks, we have to use our technology in order to do that. We have to go into a website called Works that costs $7 a check, and we also belong to a software through TLO that we pay $50 a month. So in order for us to do searches when we do the background checks, bartender checks and that, each time we do that, we have to pay for that search. So we have a lot of money that's invested in doing the background checks, those are all printed off. When those are run, they go across my desk. Some of the, some of the packets are very thick, so that's why you see an increase in, from what we have been charging for background checks for in-state and out-of-state. Out-of-state, we do use the TLO, if anybody has lived out-of-state, that's $6.90 per check for that, and we get charged $50 a month no matter what, as to if we run $50 worth of checks, we pay the $50. But if we run over $100 worth of checks, we pay $100. When we run two checks one month, we still pay the $50. So that's to cover our cost and fees for us doing the background checks. If anybody has any questions.
Well, the proposed fee, increase for that is $12 for in-state and $20 for out-of-state. Okay. Special assessment letters, we've been charging $25 a parcel since 1993. As comparison, the City of Clintonville has been charging $50 per parcel for 10 years now, and $75 if it's a rush. So this is another instance where I just feel we need to be brought up to date and update our, our current fees. Public site fee, Aaron might jump in on this one a little bit. This was last updated in 1995. It's very confusing. It calls for payment of 50% of the total be paid when 20% of the lots are sold, and the remaining 50% be paid when 50% of the lots are sold for a subdivision, and for a minor subdivision, the public site fee was payable when the first lot was sold. Confusing, very confusing. Confusing for developers and for our office as far as collecting, trying to keep track of, you know, our 50% of the lots sold, this kind of thing. That, I simply just want to change the wording so that it's paid upfront. When the, when the developer comes into the planning office, they would just pay the fee upfront, and we wouldn't have to track it for 10, 15 years. So that's that. Water, soda water beverage license, we had stopped issuing these back in 2018. There, the maximum that we can charge by state statute is $5 per license. It just doesn't pay for all the work that's involved for our office to collect the minimal $5. And I checked with surrounding municipalities, and they do not issue a soda license or charge for it. And milk dealer, which is the final one, this, I put the history behind this as well. We have been charging $40 since 1988, and it doesn't affect the businesses that sell it. What it is for is for the distributors that come to the local stores and put the milk product in. We've been having a hard time collecting from anybody except for QuickTrip, and I don't feel it's fair to charge just one place when there's Morning Glory, I can't even think of all the different names of milk brands that are out there. So I, I feel that we could just simply drop that one as well. So those are my recommendations, this is just the first reading. So did anybody have any questions or concerns?
Are these annual fees?
Yes.
Okay. For the, for the one for the vegetable guy, one, is that the one that was in the parking lot of?
Yes, down by the police.
Because that person was very happy there. So would there be room for more if someone else said, "I wanna buy it"?
Aaron, I guess that's a question for you.
Yeah, I think we could have that conversation if someone wanted to buy that same license and do the same thing that that individual's doing. Yeah, I absolutely think that.
That area?
Yeah.
Because it's a nice area.
Well, it used to be here on the corner.
Right, exactly.
And they were parallel parked, and we had four to six at one time when I was hired, and it's down to one now, so.
Till he drove them away. Yeah, it's not an exclusive license, so.
Okay, that's what I wondered if others could.
We can have more, definitely.
That area, okay.
If we can get more vendors to come in.
Sure. Anybody else have a question on that? Again, this is the first reading, so this will be brought up at our November 19th meeting for passage. And Sandy, you have another one here.
This one came up, we always have an annual meeting with the Appleton Health Department, and the former administrator used to have this meeting. So Barb and I met with him, wonderful people. We learned that over the years, since, since 2005, when we first implemented our fees, the fees have been increased, and we've been billing out the different businesses higher fees than what our ordinance says and what's listed on our city website. All this, this ordinance is going to do is just bring us to where we should be. So if any businesses come into town, they see that we charge this amount, 45, not 29, which is what the old ordinance said. It's just updating the ordinance, getting us to where we're at as far as billing goes. So this is a rather simple ordinance.
Okay. And again, this is the first reading, so we'll be bringing this up at the next city council meeting. And next up then, we have license report number 1471, which is on page 138 of your And again, it says operator's license, but we all know these as bartender's license.
Not for the first several years that was on council, I might add.
I had to ask, too.
You didn't know, huh?
No, I didn't know.
Well, I'd say, I think that's why I say it, just so people understand, what are they operating? Okay, so the, the one that has the double asterisk there, is that okay, that one, or?
Yes.
Okay.
We were notified today that that was paid.
Okay. So they're all okay, we're, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report number 1471, this is an operator's license. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Well, we're getting paid tonight, aren't we? Next up, we have approval of an employee-paid dental insurance plan from Anthem Insurance. Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page 139 of the packet, and this is to cover the change in the provider for the employees voluntary dental insurance benefit. Their premiums are totally paid by the employee that elects the coverage. We had Delta Dental, Wisconsin, they proposed an 8% premium increase, and we asked the Porton Group to go out for, to market to see whether or not we could get a better deal for the employees. After the review, we had several of them, but the wellness committee, which reviews the employee, employee insurance plans, decided that Anthem would be the best choice since we don't have that many employees to come up to the minimums for the other plans, so we're gonna, we request that we move the voluntary dental over to Anthem.
All right. So this is all employee-paid, we just, it runs through the city payroll, so we would need a motion to approve this.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Fair, that the council approves of the voluntary dental insurance contract with Anthem Insurance. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, nothing under the 30-minute discussion tonight. Communications recommendations of the mayor, again, just remember that we have a committee of the whole meeting afterwards. Anybody else, anything for the good of the, this meeting? We would need a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that the council adjourns till its next regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at 7:26 PM. Let's take 10 minutes here, and then we'll get into money talk.
Okay.
Okay, so this is actually, I think, our third meeting, maybe our fourth meeting, discussing the budget, and Kathy is, is, actually Erin and I saw the presentation this afternoon, and we're seeing it tonight, and she's added some things to that, too, so I'll just turn it over to Kathy.
Do you wanna approve the agenda?
No. Okay. Okay, I, I call this committee of the whole, everybody's in attendance, sorry about that. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the agenda with the handouts that we just received. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, now, fiscal year 2020 budget discussion, Kathy.
Well, it's been a challenge again this year, but I've, I've, I've been putting in the items that we did review at our previous meetings. The second police, school liaison officer, which is being 75% funded by the Opaaca School District. No increase in the group health insurance rate, increases from the Wisconsin retirement system contribution rates for employees that are qualified, 3% cost of living increase to city employees, and a 50 cent per hour increase for the custodial staff. A mayor's salary increase after the April 2020 election to 12,250. Altermanic representative salary increase for those elected after the April 2020 election to 4,850. Reorganization of the Community Services Department per Erin Jensen's memo that was in the packet. There is no budget impact for this year, for 2020. Promotion of Barb Roberg to Deputy Clerk effective 1/1/2020 with a salary adjustment of $7,400. That brings her to the same level or just below the level of the deputy treasurer. Half-year funding for a police drug officer, this is new. This was a request by the mayor to include in this budget. The cost of that half-year would be about $37,875 for entry-level officer. We had increase in the tax levy in accordance with the levy limits of $33,036, and that was attributable to a over 1% increase in our net new construction and the little bit of levy adjustment that we get for the closure of TIF number five, which was about $2,000. It was a very small tid. Increase in the transportation aids, our beer, that we did not do any roads, has finally dropped off of the formula, and we saw an increase of $55,368 from the transportation aids. We increased the building permit fees and interest each by $25,000. My portfolio investment in us having increases in the fund balance in our, our cash that we hold each year, and, and the market has allowed us to increase it conservatively by $25,000. And building permit fees, we're anticipating being able to increase those fees as we see more cost for doing the inspections. And the bottom line on this is that we would transfer $43,681 from fund balance for the general fund. I provided for you a summary of each of the classifications and departments, the last two years actual, where we sit for October 31st, 2019, where we estimate our year to end. Right now, I'm estimating the year to end on a positive note by about 110. ten thousand dollars. And then our budget requests from the departments, that includes all of the items I went over. And the departments were not allowed to increase their other line items below the personnel. So only adjustments that were done, other than the new personnel changes, were, everything was held, the line items were held the same as two thousand nineteen's budget. So a lot of the increases have to do with, with that. And then we also, in the general fund, removed the youth program costs to a special revenue fund. And that was for dollar-for-dollar that we moved. And I'll get, when I get to the youth program fund, I'll go over that. But I just wanted to go over the general fund and show that we are probably going to end estimated based on this budget with just under two million dollars in the fund balance. Bringing that up, it's at twenty, almost twenty-nine percent of operating expenses, which is in a very good position to be. And it's because all of our departments really watch how we're spending taxpayers' dollars and how we generate the revenues to cover these costs. So I'm not giving you any of the line item details, but if you want to, you can come to my office, and I'll be more than happy to give you the dawn and dirty numbers. I provided on the next page just a bar graph for your information, since two thousand thirteen, what our tax levy has been. As you can see, it's been broken down a little bit, but it's pretty much stayed within that three and a half, three to three and a half million dollar rate over the last seven years. So that's very good. The next page is just some graphs showing the general fund revenue breakdown by the different types of revenues and general fund expenditures. As you can see, the tax levy is still our major funding source for the general operations of the city. And again, public safety and public works are our two largest areas where we have the most expenditures for the operations. The next page is our tax calculation, and I'm still missing some pieces to this. So this is still a draft of what it is, based on our assessed value of four hundred and fourteen million four thirty-two seven hundred. Our tax levy for the gen, for the city of three million two hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars would generate a rate of seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Even though our levy is going up by thirty-three thousand, we had nine million dollars worth of new assessed value put on, and that is going to bring down the city's tax rate by ten cents per thousand. So now, these numbers do not include the TIF levy. So this is just our levy compared year-to-year and the school district. School district is going down by two dollars and twenty-seven cents. I still don't have the school levy credit or the Wapaka County levy apportionment. So those two numbers will generate a different number. And also, I don't have the first dollar credit or the lottery credit. So a lot of this is still based on last year's numbers, and it would be, the hundred thousand dollar home would go down about two hundred and forty-two dollars without the TIF levy. So once the TIF levy goes in, it probably will be about a hundred and thirty-nine dollars until I get the other numbers. So tax bills will be going down next year. Some of the other funds that we have a budget for is the hotel motel tax fund. This is the fund that all of the tax, room tax collected in the city is distributed to the seat, convention and visitors bureau and the city. We retain thirty percent of the funds and distribute the balance to the CBB board. And again, based on past performance in the fund, we're looking at an increase of about seven percent in collections, and that's being conservative. The next fund is the airport fund. And the only increase that I have in here for, for expenditures is going to be for snow plowing and fuel, but I offset also what we generate in revenue for fuel a little bit. This fund is going to need, at the end of this year, and in two thousand twenty, if it's fuel sales and hangar rentals do not continue to increase, and snow plowing is less expensive. It all has to do with the weather. There will be needing a cash influx because they will be in deficit cash, and a lot of it has to do with the inventory that it has to hold for the fuel. There's a lot of money invested in, in the fuel. There's some invent, so there is some carrying costs with the fuel inventory. But we'll have to look with the airport board as to generating additional revenues in this fund. The next fund is the transit fund. And after a transfer of cash to bring it back into a positive cash this year from prior years of it being unfunded, I was talking to the state, and with the increase in our fares and getting the new vehicles in, we should see no need for a transfer from the general fund to cover this fund. This fund should start paying for what it's doing. I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we're starting to make sure that the fleet is efficient and up to date, and raising our fees at a moderate cost to cover expenses. So working with Brown Cab, I feel that we should be in a good position at the end of next year. Adult recreation programs, this is for just the adult programs, and it's self-funded, so whatever it generates in revenue is what it can spend for its programs. And there's a small amount that's transferred for administration to the general fund. And that fund is, again, should be in good position still at the end of next year. I'm not seeing any increases or decreases in the participation. The new fund on the next page is the youth program fund. And when we were going to the school district to look at Fund Eighty, we heard from the townships that they wanted more transparency in reporting. And after we looked, staff looked at the fact that, based on the towns' payments and the fees collected, we could spin this off into its own separate special revenue fund. To be able to do a special revenue fund, it has to be less than fifty percent funded by property taxes. So it can go into special revenue fund, and we've moved the costs for the youth programs based on what we had presented with the Fund Eighty, and we're looking at going and having a hundred and two thousand of, three hundred and twenty-three dollars of our levy that we levy go into this fund to fund it. And that hundred and two, three twenty-three is a reduction in the amount that we'll be charging each of the townships that participate. Andrew, do you remember what we came up with? Was it sixteen dollars?
Sixteen eighty-six.
Sixteen eighty-six per capita charge. So it was up to eighteen fifty per capita, and based on what we were able to move over to this fund, we felt that we would charge not only the city residents that same amount that we would charge each of the townships, and we should be able to operate with this fund. All of the information for the two thousand nineteen year-to-date estimate, year-to-date actual, and eighteen and seventeen are just histories from the general fund for just reporting purposes only. So this fund wasn't, isn't going to be created until two thousand twenty, but I wanted to give you some history as to what we see the trend on this fund is. So there is a new fund for next year. The next budget is the debt service fund, and we've gone over some of the debt with the capital improvements fund. And we will be keeping the levy at a million seventy thirty-four. I'm not raising it, I'm not lowering it. I do have additional one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of debt service payments to do, but we did get some money back from the closed TIDS in paying back for debt service that the taxpayers paid when the increment wasn't enough to cover their debt service. So I made the TIDS pay them, pay the debt service fund back. And that fund, along with some of the savings that we received for refinancing, I am using to cover that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm not increasing the levy, even though our debt service amount is going up. The next six pages are each of the TIF districts, based on the increment that is calculated. And we went through all this before with the TIFs, but I can see that each one of the TIFs are in a good position still. I don't see any issues, even though some of the increments have come down and some went up, based on their equalized value and the amount of construction in each of the, in the TIF districts. I know this is a lot of information, a lot of numbers, but the main thing is, is our levy's going up, but because of the amount of value that was in, in the city for next year, the rate is going down. That I can see, even with adding all of the information, we're in a good position again this year. But thanks to the department heads for not adding anything else to their budget other than personnel and the costs associated with.
So as you look at it, I know it's all clear to you. And, but I, I think what I, what I glean from this, quite honestly, is that it's going to be business as usual, except for the items that Kathy has outlined on your, on that one memo that she sent out with the thirteen items or so that are on there. I think it's important for us to understand that, as Kathy said, over the last couple years, we have actually been able to add money to the fund balance. So even though we budgeted a certain amount of money, the department heads were able to come in below budget. I mean, even with the, with the, with the extra overtime we've had to have in the police department, with the extra snow removal that we've had to do, we've been able to keep that actually well below what we had budgeted. And so I don't know if you can anticipate that forever, but it, you know, it looks like it's something that is, is a good trend for us. I think as you look at this, Kathy likes to use, and I like these too, where you show the separate funds. So you have the recreation fund now, you have the adult fund. I mean, those are pretty easy to follow when you're only looking at that one fund. Don't think like I would think, you know, that, that you have a separate checkbook for each one of those funds. That's not how it works, you know? It's grouped together, but Kathy has it separated for, for purposes of doing the accounting part of that. So I don't know if you have any specific questions. I do want to ask you one other thing be, well, I'll take questions, and then I want to ask you about maybe a possible future meeting, but let's, let's just go from there. Scott?
Could you expand on the half-year funding of a drug officer? Are we adding an officer, or what's the situation?
Well, I'll let Brian and Kathy explain it, but I know one of Brian's, the police department's top priority is to get a drug officer. I mean, we don't, I mean, I know that this is an issue throughout the state, throughout the country, throughout the world, but if we can do a little bit to help reduce the drug problem that we have in our community, I think it's at, it's, it's a low cost to get us to where we want. We do think, maybe I should let you touch on the budget things, but Brian, why don't you explain the importance of that drug officer and?
I wasn't questioning the importance, I was just.
Yeah, I get it.
Questioning a half a year, I'm not quite sure what's going on there with that.
Well, with the, the half a year would fit in, it would help, I guess it would fit in within the budget that we wouldn't just have somebody from like January to June. We'd be looking at hiring somebody halfway through the year for the rest of the year, and then we'd be saving that money, those up, you know, upfront costs is what we would be doing. And that's why it says for a half a year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. I mean, just like the PSLO officer, although the, the school district and we would love to see that second PSLO officer in the school right away, it doesn't work that way. I mean, you have to, you have to go out and find the person to take that position, and you have to train that person. So, I mean, it's going to take some months before we get to that.
Yeah, because like right now, we're looking at the hiring of that PSL. When they finally get into the school, probably April or May is before they'll actually get into school because of the field training program that they have to go through for twelve weeks.
Would this officer be just strictly a drug officer in foreseeable future then? That's his sole purpose, or would he?
There would, we would promote, no, we would promote somebody from within.
Oh, okay.
For that position. So the officers that we'd be hiring would be new officers coming in that we'd be training for the road.
Other questions?
Alan?
With regard to the two salary increases, does that have to be done by separate motion, or is that just by? or is that just by adoption in the budget?
Well, those are personnel issues, so I would say we will need to approve those before they actually go into place.
Okay.
But right now, we're just budgeting for them at this time, and we will see it in the future.
Okay.
You're right. Any other questions? So here's, here's this, what my thoughts are, and again, I ran this past Aaron and Kathy this afternoon. So she gave you not the, the total detail of everything that goes into the whole budget, and she said that if you need to get more detail, or if you want more detail, that you can certainly go in and sit with Kathy, and she'll go through it with you. But I want to put this out to you. If there is enough individuals on the council that would like to go into more detail on this, we could set up another council meeting, like next Tuesday, and we could dig into the detail a bit more. And what you could do is basically, we could set our own idea of what, what you originally want to ask for, you know? I mean, you could look through this and say, okay, Kathy, this is what I want to see. Because it's, if you want to see it, it's, there's probably a good chance that the other, other council members would like that, too. If it's less than five people that want to see the detail, then I would say that, you know, we're not going to have a quorum, and Kathy could meet with you, you know, if you could arrange that those five people or less could meet in the conference room upstairs. Kathy said she'd be more willing to meet with you. But I do want to open it up that if you want to see more detail on this and you believe that your questions are obviously questions that other council members might have or didn't think of, we could have a separate meeting next week, whether it lasts, they never last a half an hour, but it could last a half an hour, it could last three hours, depending on how much detail you want to go into. So I, I'm just leaving that open to you.
I also want to make a comment and maybe for everybody to understand, we are under levy limit law. So if we lower the levy, we don't get to bring that levy back up again until we get net new construction. We were very lucky this year. We had over one percent in, in net new construction. In the past, we're lucky if we get over a half a percent. And so, you know, this year, we had thirty-three thousand dollars. We could raise the levy, and that helps with, besides the other revenue sources. But, you know, if you were looking at what can I do to cut this budget, it would be to cut something that you wouldn't want to cut the levy, because at that point, you would be detrimental going forward with levy limit. So I'm, I'm just putting some information out there. I'm, like I said to the mayor, I'm more than happy to sit down and show you all of the department's line items and every, and, and how I arrived at all of these numbers. But I, I gave you summaries tonight to be able, for you to look at them and, and ask me questions. And I'm more than happy to sit down and meet and go over everything.
Yeah, you know, Kathy brought this up a little, thank you Kathy, a little earlier when she talked about the transportation funds, you know? Who would have thought back in two thousand and eleven or twelve, when we decided not to do some transportation roadwork in the city, that that would hurt us for eight years in our budget? Because now you have zero plus these other years, and you divide it with that zero, you know, if you take zero plus zero plus a hundred and divide it by three, it ends up thirty-three. But if you end up with a hundred plus a hundred plus a hundred, you end up, divided by three, it's a hundred. And that's what was happening with our road funds. And we didn't just do that one year. I mean, we thought we were being prudent with our money by saying, hey, we're, we're just not going to do road programs. But the way levy limits work and the way the state funding works, we actually were getting hurt by not doing road projects. And since Kathy's been here, she's figured out a way to get our funding back up. And you see that we've increased that this year by what, fifty-five thousand, I think you said?
Correct.
And that goes along kind of with the, the idea of the levy limits, too. There were, there were a couple of years where we actually reduced the levy, thinking that was the smart thing to do. Well, it isn't the smart thing to do, because it hurts you in the future, too, you know? So you have to be careful. And I think that's her comment, is what she's making. You know, if you want to cut out a copy machine or cut out somebody in, in one of the departments or something like that, we would ask that you would find another place for that money, because we don't want to, we don't want to reduce the levy. So again, I'm just reiterating what she said. Other questions? Let me, let me see, show hands of people that would like to see a, a meeting next Tuesday.
I'm going to go.
I don't have my hand up because I want a meeting next Tuesday. Just asking you if you do or not. Okay, so you feel comfortable, are there, well, okay. Kathy, you let us know if you think you need to have a meeting, then if you get enough questions and you feel that. Now, you will have the opportunity at the November nineteenth meeting, before the city council meeting on the nineteenth, there is a public hearing, even though we're not required to have a public hearing, there is a public hearing on the budget. So individuals can certainly come and make comments on the budget, and you obviously, before you approve the budget, you will have the opportunity to ask as many questions as you want to on what's going on. I think Aaron is starting to get a pretty good grasp of the budget, too. So, I mean, you know, specific questions on the operation of, of the budget, I think, you know, you can direct those towards Aaron, too. I mean, one of the cool things that he did this year, which I think you can appreciate if you look at the tax rate calculation worksheet, is we took the TIF out of there. So you can really see the comparison between the city, the school district, and the county without the TIF money in there, because we're the only ones that have the TIF money. They don't, you know what I'm saying? So this is really comparing apples to apples by keeping that out of here for your, for you to see here. So that's, that's one big thing that we've seen already. Mary, I'm sorry.
I was just going to clarify. So we're voting on the budget on the nineteenth?
Correct.
We don't have to, but we're planning on it.
Okay.
Yep. I think if we don't do it then, then we have to make sure we do it by the first meeting in December.
Otherwise, tax bills will be late.
Yeah. Oh, darn it.
We don't want that.
Yeah, right. I, I, they won't be late, no matter what. Okay, anything else for the good of this meeting?
Would you adjourn?
I would just like, this isn't about this meeting, but I would like to just commend Aaron for doing that newsletter for us. I absolutely love it. It's really awesome to get that short and dirty on what's going on each, each week. So thank you very much.
Yeah, glad you guys can use it. If you have any questions off of any of the material, obviously, you know how to get ahold of me, so.
Yep.
So Alan made a motion to adjourn, and did I hear a second? Second by Paul Hagan, so any other discussion? I'm sure Mary didn't hear it, because she was.
I didn't.
Yeah.
I'm a little deep, too.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we're adjourned at eight-eleven. Have a great night.